All right, having a prayer in the pledge. Will you please lead us in the prayer?
Yes ma'am.
Good afternoon. Father, I pray that as we gather today to take care of the business of the great city of Abbeville, that you be in our presence and in our mix and that all that we do is to uplift you, not ourselves. In Jesus's name I pray.
Councilman Campbell, will you lead us in the pledge?
Yes.
Thank you. Couple rules of housekeeping. We have no presentations tonight, but normally we limit presentations to seven minutes. Items of business, if you would like to allow, if you'd like to make a public comment, we ask that you do so by coming up to the front stating your name for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. We are live streaming, I like to remind people that our microphones are on for the council and mayor that allows anybody in the lobby to be able to hear. After your item of business is handled, if you would like to leave, you may do so, just do so quietly as least disruptive as possible. That being said, I think we will move on to public comments. Are there any public comments on any agenda item prior to us moving forward? Hearing none, we'll move on to approval of budget reports. Item number one, to approve the July 2025 budget to actual report. I have a motion and a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed, motion carries. New item, new business, item number one, to ratify the cost not exceed 25,000 to reroute the water line at the old Schwagman property. Motion and second counsel real quick, we, as you know, they broke ground on some demolition work as well as reconstruction work, they're building a new facility there. When we got down and started doing site work, got the property owners to clear the tree lines and the grass, we found a six inch water main that cuts through the middle of the property that wasn't mapped. So we're rerouting it because it's actually right where the building that they're building was supposed to be. Chris, do you have an update on that work, they started work Monday?
Yeah, we cut in a valve, because there was no valve to shut the water off. We didn't want to shut down the bypass, so we cut in a valve hot.
That's been done and completed?
It's been done and complete. Most of the line is laid, we're just in tightening.
Please keep your public comments down in the back.
And then we have to coronate the line before we can hook it up, because we still have residents hooked to that line behind Schwagman. Once we finish that, we're gonna, we're gonna go and start digging around to see the line that goes to Schwagman, see if we can find a valve there.
It also supplies some houses behind it, we were able to determine that. So we're gonna set it up to where in the future as they develop the site, it's less disruptive to those on the line.
And we'll get a ride away, once all of this is done, we'll get a ride away, we'll put it on the GIS mapping. And then the future, well, it takes my place, and Larry Moore's place, they'll know where it's at.
Okay, any questions or comments for Chris on this one?
Great job by your team, Chris, on that Schwagman. I know we have at least one who feels very, very good about the removal of that building.
Eighteen years, worth of grief.
It's still in the works, it's still in the planning stages.
Yeah, it's gonna take a little bit of time, but they will be demoing the building, they will be removing all the existing asphalt, putting up a new building, re-pouring some asphalt, and some of the site will return to green space until they have future development planned out.
Make sure you don't clear nothing, Chris, we gotta have you there to the whole thing.
All right. Hearing no other questions or comments, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, to execute the option to extend intergovernmental agreement with the Vermillion Parish Police Jury for the lease of the Cultural and Alliance Center Board. Motion and a second, Board, you wanna say anything?
Yeah, just to let y'all know, that's the old library that the Cultural Center and Alliance Center is in. The lease granted us a 20-year lease with two 10-year options, we're exercising the first option.
And I'd like to add that it's great for both entities that five organizations are using that building. And if you look at the international visitors to our beautiful city, go into that building and look at the guestbook. Twenty-six hundred visitors thus far. So it's wonderful for the city, it's great that the jury has partnered with the city on that building. And the active lease we have had, this just assures that that is continuing for all parish residents to visit that building with beautiful displays.
Any questions or comments?
We just saw that lease again?
We've had it for 28 years. So the legal position on behalf of the city is gonna be that we already exercised the option by remaining in the building, paying the fees. So the motion would need to be a motion to ratify the decision to exercise the first option of that lease.
Okay, I have an amended motion on the table and a second. All in favor of the amended motion? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Board, you work on that.
Item number three, to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an electrical servitude agreement with E-Rath Sugar Company. Motion and a second, any questions or comments? This is, so on the west side of the river, E-Rath Sugar is actually at the railroad tracks where it crosses over. Years ago, the city, during one of the storms, the city went in and put in a limestone road to get down to our electric, the lines were down, we needed to go in and make some repairs, the road was wet because of the storm. City went in, laid out some limestone. When we went in to do the new sewer line, it crosses the river right there on that same parcel from the east side to the west side. But it was discussed with the property owner of E-Rath Sugar that the road that was put in during the hurricane wasn't exactly on the servitude that was in place with the city, right? It's kind of winding, it goes outside of the servitude. So now that we've completed the sewer line work, we reinforced the road in an agreed upon position with the landowner, we need to go in and amend the servitude to cover the area where the road exists. Did I cover that right, Todd?
Yes, the electrical.
And the electrical easement, so that moving forward, the gate's locked, it's not public property, but we have access to it in an emergency and the road is there for us to be able to get all the way down and deal with any issues on the electrical lines, or now the sewer line that crosses on the property right there. And we have to maintain the limestone and keep the grass down on the road portion as part of that servitude agreement. And the guys have been doing a good job of that, but we wanted to wait till the project was, and you all know the sewer line project's not done, but the work on that property is done, and so we feel comfortable making that amendment to the servitude agreement now. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, to approve a special event permit for community wellness, to hold community wellness volleyball jamboree on September 6, 2025, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at Battlefield at A. Como Park. And a second, I know Ms. Tara Tuchet's here on behalf of the organization, because Ms. Stephanie couldn't be here, do you wanna say anything? Y'all have any questions for Ms. Tuchet?
No, the event is set up, and Chris, thank you for working with Stephanie to get those details in order, and we're looking for good weather and great participation on that event.
About the city team?
Yeah, tell Stephanie it's great for the city.
They are a nonprofit, so the nonprofit bill apply. And I did notice that on the insurance certificate, it does name the location. I don't know if it names the city of Abbeville, so we just need to check that before the event, but y'all did provide a copy of the insurance, I'm just, I'm not sure if it names it as additional insured like it's supposed to, so maybe have her reach out to Sarah and just make sure everything's right after tonight. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, to approve a special event permit for Bayou Exchange and the Bowser family to hold the Bowser Trail Ride and Family Event beginning November 14, 2025 through November 16, 2025, at 2907 Rodeo Road, the Red Born, from 12:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. The special event permit is needed when the trail ride is accessing a city street. Motion and a second, anybody here from that event? Nope? Any questions or comments?
They moved earlier.
That's okay, this is a repeat event we have, so it's better early than late. And Chief, they met with you already, right? I thought I saw in the email that you already agree with the row and everything. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute all documents pertaining to the GA, General Aviation Maintenance 2025 Agreement for the airport. Motion and second, any questions or comments? This is just housekeeping, it's actually something the DOT is requiring. Okay, no questions or comments, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, to approve change order number three relative to the Grayson Avenue Street and Sidewalk Improvement Projects, the change order reduces the contract amount by seventeen thousand, two fifty-six, sixty. I'm taking that, so when I say reduces. All right, any questions or comments, Todd? Anything?
It's just the administrative change order, the project has been completed and we balanced out the quantities for the constructed quantities versus the bid quantities, and fortunately, it's a deduction, so.
For those wondering, that construction project was around 497,944 for the sidewalks, roadwork, and everything that went along with it. Motion and a second, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, to approve payment, a partial payment estimate number 10 in the amount of 23,237.38 payable to Glen Leger Construction LLC relative to the Grayson Avenue and Sidewalk Improvement Project. Motion and second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. The number I said earlier, that was in there already. To adopt a resolution of acceptance authorizing the mayor to execute an act of acceptance relative to the Grayson Avenue Street and Sidewalk Improvement Project. Motion and a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, to approve change order number one relative to the runway lighting upgrade project, the change order increases, there it goes, the price of the contract by nineteen thousand, fifty-six, fifty-three. Motion and second, any questions or comments?
Paid by the FAA.
We ended up putting a little bit of money into this one, I think, if I recall correctly, right? But it's from the airport fund.
Yeah, the majority of the project, 390,000 comes from DOTD and the city shares, it's gonna end up being forty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars.
But it is from the airport funds, not from our general fund. Okay, any questions or comments, that project is done, as you'll see, we'll go through two more agenda items up right after this. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11, to approve payment of estimate for partial payment number four in the amount of nineteen thousand, five oh one twenty-three payable to Ernest P. Bro Electrical LLC relative to the runway lighting upgrade project. Motion and a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12, to adopt a resolution of acceptance authorizing the mayor to execute the notice of acceptance relative to the runway lighting upgrade project. Motion and a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 13, to approve payment, a partial payment number one in the amount of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four thirty-seven, fifty, payable to Preferred Mechanical LLC relative to the water treatment improvement project. Motion and second, any questions and comments? The price, the one twenty-nine, four thirty-seven is the mobilization, the site work they've accomplished so far, and some signage. Todd, I didn't have time to go back and check, but can you tell me, or can you check to see if they have the DRA logo on their signage? Because I want to make sure, since that was a separate part of the money, I know it needs to be labeled as such. Verify that. This is four hundred, how many days is in this project, Todd? Do you have that with you? It's probably only caught.
Five hundred and forty calendar days.
Five hundred and forty calendar days so far, they mowed in, they broke up the old concrete slab. What else have they done so far?
They've been concentrating a lot on getting their submittals approved so that they can go their equipment on all.
Those approvals, the time that that will take and everything is included in the five hundred and forty days? We don't think it'll exceed that timeline at this point, it's very early on. And that's a complete, not a complete, but a mostly complete overhaul of the water plant. We have already pulled the service pumps and started research, we work in that, we did that directly, yeah, please keep it down in the back. She was saying it on my behalf.
You can see that everything's on schedule with that project?
I mean, it's very slow in the early stages because of all the submittals, so it's really hard to say, but they are processed and there's some bills, I mean.
And the FAA has to prove all the.
This is water, this is water. This is the water plant project, this is the one it's about. I think the contract amount, what is it, Todd, the contract amount for construction? Eight point five million, and that's the one that's funded by Water Sector, Water Sector, the revolving loan fund, and Delta Regional Authority. I think we have about a hundred thousand dollars that's out of pocket for the city of that whole project, but we're supposed to get it back in the revolving loan money, so we're gonna have new filter material. It's not going to be the easiest road as we work through the project, there will be some things that will be public about, you know, quality changes that you'll see as we work through it. But at the end, more reliable, better quality, and a more resilient plant for the citizens of Abbeville at zero cost, hopefully, to the city, so. A lot of work to get us to that point. All right, I think I have a motion and a second. Okay, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Get to the end. Item number 14, to submit two names for the Abbeville Harbor and Terminal District Board to fill one vacancy created by the death of Tim Cresswell, whose term was to expire June 30, 2028.
Michael Bertrand.
Okay, so I have two names, Michael Bertrand and Corey Leger. Are there any other names? Okay, hold on, let me put these now. Okay, so I think the best way to do this, Board, I'm gonna have to rely on you. Should we just take a vote on the first two, and then if they don't pass, go to the third, or what?
Unless anybody wants to submit anymore, if that's the two.
Is that the only ones we have? Okay, so we're gonna take a motion on Michael Bertrand first. I have a motion, Michael Bertrand, you have a second. A motion and a second. All in favor of Michael Bertrand, let's do roll call, just because there's three names to decide on. I'll start with Councilman Hardy in District A.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Councilwoman Broussard? You're gonna have to say yes on two names, so that's okay, you want a nay for this one? Well, you're gonna have to pick two names, say, nay, okay? So I have four yays and one nay, Councilwoman Broussard for Michael Bertrand, so that name passes. The second name we're gonna vote on is, am I doing it right, Mark? Corey Leger. Councilwoman Broussard made a motion, do we have a second? Okay, I have a motion and a second to nominate Corey Leger. Again, we're gonna do a roll call vote, starting with District A, Councilman Hardy. Okay, Councilman Plazon. Okay, Councilman Broussard. Okay, Councilwoman Broussard? Councilman Campbell? Okay, so I have two, three yeses and two nos. So the second name will be Corey Leger, and we will not vote on Leroy Plowden, because we have the two names. Do we have to take a motion on that, or no, that's it? So that item of business is handled. Moving on to all business. Item number one, to approve the 2025 budget amount of five outland for the Hope to Home Initiative Project. Counsel, last meeting, we adopted the story of the Hope to Home Initiative Project, and at that point, I had not given you a mouth. This is not to exceed 5,000 before the end of the year. We'll take the money from the general fund, I don't think we'll spend this, but it's just to have a dollar amount when we amend the budget later this year. So I'm asking for a motion to appropriate 5,000 into the Hope to Home Initiative. Motion and a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. That's it for items of new business and items of old business. We're moving on to departmental reports and updates. Engineers, Todd, you have the board? Cam, you have anything? Okay, anything for our engineers? Attorney, Board?
Just the executive session.
Okay, we will look for a motion for executive session at the end. Any questions for Board? Anything for Board? Hearing none, moving on. Item number three, Public Works Director, Chris.
All right, just a few things quick. Code Enforcement Dollar Store is getting a new fence by VC. We cited them for that dilapidated fence, and they tried to send in an unqualified person, and then after several conversations, they sent in a qualified person. So they're gonna get a brand-new fence going on at the Dollar Store. We talked about Schwagman already. Grayson, none of the projects been accepted. Orders and signs, we're gonna change the signage from Limey to State Street. I'm gonna one-way do it, approved by the council a while back when you blacked out that road. So all of that signage is coming in, I'm gonna start on that.
Appreciate it.
That Grayson project sure came out very well, Councilman, you're. I see citizens using that very often.
Just keep the grass down around there, nice project.
Thank you very much for all the bundles being filled in District B.
Sure, so we did District A, we did District B, we did District D, we're in C now, and then we'll go to at-large on the end. But that project is coming out.
And he's doing good work, Chris.
It's coming out pretty good, considering where we didn't know, you know, that was the first time.
C is compressed, isn't it?
We got a lot of work around the airport, a lot of work around the hospital, which is our big driving factor.
DOTD should hire him to do airport.
And then the city would lose me.
Not you, I'm gonna call your guy. No, you're not going nowhere, you know what's on Teddy.
A lot of properties that the city owns.
Lot of.
A lot of properties.
Judicated, not as many as the police jury. The police jury has a lot of properties that they adjudicated.
I think last time they had a count, it was ninety-something properties that are adjudicated to the police jury right now that are in the city limits, I believe.
Yes, they do not take care of one of them.
A lot of them in my view, but.
The ones we have in the city are a lot of trouble maintaining, huh? I knew you were kinda overwhelmed with the grass cutting, right?
Yeah, yeah, we, see, Sunday the guys worked overtime, they cut thirty-eight properties. That's just their two-week cycle that they do on the weekends. There's another thirty-eight for the next weekend. But there's a lot of properties that we flush during the week, you know? We cut a lot of properties. Most of us landlord, sometime we gotta get in there with a skid steer with a brush cut on the front of it, you know? Sometime you gotta get in there with just a weed eater, because you don't know what's in there. The ones that we've cut before, we know what's in there. So, yeah, code enforcement's a beast right now. The grass is growing, neighbors are reporting neighbors. Some of these things are civil, so we get with Board, and when he says it's civil, we turn it back over to the property owners to decide on their own what they're gonna do, you know?
Maybe we'd be advisable.
Hey, 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 hold on, hey. Everything will be picked up on the camera, so I'm asking you all to not talk while we in the middle of reports, go ahead.
Maybe we'd be advisable for us to look at shutting those properties?
I think that would be a good idea, but that's gonna be the, that's gonna be the council's decision. I think it's all rests on the.
We do everything legally that we can to offload properties. So the properties that we are stuck with are the ones that have either not been all the way through the legal process, or are probably the liens are higher than the marketable title. I was on a call this week, well, last week, about the state legislature just passed a law that allows for the creation of land trusts to deal with blighted properties in Louisiana. So it is something that I was on a conference call last week about, is this an opportunity and how other states and cities have used land trusts to transfer those properties, clear titles, and get them marketable and put them back on the market? It's a heavy lift, or transferred the information over to Board. We had an initial discussion, it's not going to be a fast process, but you could look, you can probably expect for me to bring back that idea to you guys for consideration on a way to handle these large amounts of property and issues with families not wanting to open secessions, and then trying to find a more effective way to deal with both abandoned and blighted properties in Abbeville. The law right now does not work.
A few months ago, when there were requests for an appraisal of 303 Mark Street, I'm not sure where that went.
And I turned it over to the interested citizen.
Now, also, when we have a city sale, because I have quite a few properties in my district, when we have the city sale, they have three years.
The property owner has three years to come back and reclaim their property, pay all the liens on it, pay anybody, if someone bought it at tax sale. But when you buy a property at tax sale, you're not really buying the property, right? And it's a broken process, that's all I'm gonna say, it's a very broken process, there's a lot of. I'm not gonna get into the weeds with it, because I'll explain it to y'all individually if you want, but when you buy it, you're really just buying a percentage of the title of the property, and it's, it's not a, you know, people think they go and buy a property at tax sale, they're not, right? And it sits in adjudication for three years, and for three years, it's in limbo, and in the three years, they gotta spend a lot of money clearing the title on the property. It's a very long and extended process, and it's not, it's broken, right? We have a lot of people that say that their family have moved away, they don't want anything to do with the property, so they just leave it in that state, and it's an issue. It's a big burden for the city, it's a big burden for the residents to live next to these properties, right?
It's hard to get a cleared title on that property, right? Because the bank will not loan the money if you wanted to build.
For the most part, probably not, yeah. And like the mayor was saying, you can't do anything until the redemption period has expired.
Yeah, but after redemption.
You still have to file suit at that point to get a cleared title. It's a little process.
Yeah, and there's a, what is it called, the quiet, quiet the title, or what's it called? Quick clean? I should have asked you, you were the clerk of course, now, right? But that will allow them to do stuff to the property, but you can't go and take a mortgage out on it, right? That's my understanding of that process, so I'm learning as I go, but I'm looking for solutions for it, more effective solutions.
So that's where we stand with that, so we, the city, try to take care of the ones we adjudicate.
Thank you, Chris.
Anything else for Chris? Okay, Parks and Rec? Byron, you have the floor?
All right, so Byron Dozier, Parks and Rec update. Looking ahead, we're currently working on newer contracts to bring in more organizations to use the Como Park facility, including the Perfect Game Organization along with the U.S.A. Annual Torch for the Top Tournament in December. Both of these organizations. Both of these organizations have already signed contracts to be here in fall of twenty twenty-five. Um, this past week, um, Q S A secured to be one of the seven host sites of U triple S A All-State Games, which will not take place until next year, July twenty-eighth through August second, twenty twenty-six. It's a little bit of the numbers from last year's event, which we were not a part of, but we will be a part of this coming year. Last year's event hosted two thousand one hundred seventy athletes, a total of a hundred ninety-two teams between the ages of eight and fourteen. They had teams from every state except the following seventeen: New York, New Hampshire, Delaware, Wyoming, Montana, North Dakota, South Carolina, Oregon, Washington, Idaho, Minnesota, Wisconsin, Vermont, Massachusetts, Maryland, Connecticut, and Rhode Island. And last year, Alaska and Hawaii attended this event for the first time. Um, so that's a deal that we've already sealed, um, along with a few others that we're taking care of. Other than that, um, right now, we're in the middle of flag football registration. Registration goes through Monday. I'll probably extend it, school just started, so, uh, we got the flyers out last week to all the schools in, um, Parish. And then, uh, once we include the final numbers, I'll be able to give you numbers on flag football, but we're scheduled to start the season September seventh, fifteenth.
That's great, Byron.
Good job.
And, uh, Kristen, great job. Please pass on to Jeremy. Great getting into big tournaments to come visit us.
Great, so we can get some to stay here. Okay. Anything else for Byron? All right, uh, next up is me, and I did not get time to write anything. Do I have any slides that I need to cover?
Here to look.
Okay, join our team. We have some positions open in the city of Abbeville, we advertise those online. The applications for the youth council, we've covered that before, we, we got a few in, we're still working on that. And City Hall will be closed on Labor Day, which is September second, maybe first.
First.
Okay, this is the volleyball jamboree that we approved earlier, September sixth. This is nine thirty, I think your event said seven thirty, I guess seven thirty setup?
Yeah, seven to seven.
Okay. Ordin every thread, this is the current exhibit, it's a quilting exhibit that's at the Cultural Center right here. I have not made it over there, but I need to, I heard it's really, really nice, so I'd like to go see it.
It's very nice, quite beautiful.
Okay. Next, Mayor's, Mayor and Guest Coffee Talks is August eleventh, seven A M. to eight thirty, and T P G.
It's just, we're, we're working on it, so this is just save the date, basically.
Yes, September, she has a few different dates, I'm sorry.
I sure did.
September eleven.
Yes.
And this, the, the Uniquely You event for, um, held at A Como, put on by Vermillion Reach Group. The city is a co-sponsor, it's a wonderful event for a special needs community. Um, we ask everybody enjoy, to, to join us, and if you would like to set up a tent with an activity for the kids, we welcome you to. Mar, go ahead, Christian, you cover this one.
Yeah, I just have this on here just because late August is hurricane season, like winds up and stuff, so I just kind of put the.
Also that word.
I know, but it's, it's true. So I just wanna make sure if I does know that we do have the alert system, you just text the word Abbeville to seven seven two nine five, and you'll get any type of emergency information.
So Vermillion would be Parish update, Abbeville would be Abbeville City update. Um, and you can also download the Smart nine-one-one app. This is the same app that the state uses, so the governors text messages and everything goes out on it. And hope, we hope we don't have to use it. All right, that's it for the mayors. Any questions for me? All right. Police Chief, Chief Mike Hardy at the floor.
I have an update on the building behind the police station. Uh, Councilman Brady and I did a visual inspection of the parish school board credit union building. Um, I recommend that we, uh, have it inspected and maybe make an offer. They'll probably take less than they were asking originally because I talked to Chastity, the manager today, and they're planning on being in their building about two weeks.
You can have it inspected, chief, and then bring it back with inspection for action from the council if we want to.
Just make sure that nothing's seriously wrong with it before we jump into it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have unless anyone has a question.
Nothing?
Okay.
Chief, June Mayor?
I have nothing.
Nothing? Topics for discussion, council members, Councilman Hardy?
Um, I'm good, Mary.
Well, hello, how are you?
Coming in wrong too.
It's okay.
Didn't wanna make a, a grand interest. My wife and I.
Hello?
Excuse us, everybody.
Good evening. How are you, Mayor?
Going nicely, huh?
I'm not, I'm not, I, I hate when people do that to me. You wanna say who you are? Um, Councilman Hardy? No? Councilman Plazos? Okay. Councilman Broussard?
Certainly, uh, it's a good time to be in Abbeville, get ready, the summer is nearly over. Thank God. We're gonna start nice and early, as we talked about, the Community Wellness Volleyball Tournament. Rotary Club of Abbeville will be cooking hamburgers. We invite you to come play. We invite you to come get a lone chair and watch. It's gonna be a great, great event at Badoff Field. That's September sixth. Sounds on the Square will begin in September. Hope to see you in beautiful Magdalen Square. Of course, we just talked about Uniquely You, the most special children in our society. That's a day for them in Como Park. That's September twentieth. We have the Cattle Festival October third through fifth. We're gonna have the great Grand Revue, where the mayor of, of Paris, France is coming in Magdalen Square. Come and eat and visit and renew your French heritage. And then we have November first and second, the Giant Omelet Celebration. The only place in America that this occurs. So hope to see you, enjoy your city. We're here to help you get the most out of it. Thank you.
Yeah, October eleventh, tenth or eleventh is the homecoming, so we'll have those parades. Also, tenth, it's the Friday. And, um, we will have Sounds on the Square, we'll bring the, the dates and the bands for the next meeting. Sounds on the Square, I think, starts September seventeenth, is that right, Christian?
Uh, I'm double checking.
It's the third, third.
I just finished the flyer this morning, so.
So we'll, we'll have that for the next closing of the council meeting also, switching of the bands and everything. Councilwoman Broussard?
Yes, um, something positive about, um, District B. Um, before, uh, the opening of the schools, I had, uh, local barbers and beauticians that did haircutting for, um, kids, uh, throughout the city of Abbeville. And I just wanted to give them a shout out and say thanks, uh, for giving back to the community and to the kids.
Yeah, we spent the day at the schools welcoming kids last weekend, that was a great thing too, they were excited. Some just needed a hug because they were so sad to go back to school, so I enjoyed the hugs the most. Councilman Campbell?
Uh, Mayor, I'd just like to thank, uh, Byron and Kristen for the great job they did today, and they know what I'm talking about. So thank you very much.
Mayor Bourgeois, did you just join us for the sake of joining us? I hope you didn't come for the meeting because you missed most of it.
Actually, I come and bring some sales tax revenue, funny.
Funny as odd. For those, those of you who don't know, that's Mayor Bourgeois from the city of Genneret and his beautiful wife. Which wife's name, I'm sorry, you have to introduce.
Margaret.
Margaret, welcome to Abbeville, we hope you enjoy your dinner, we got great seafood here. Any other questions or comments right now? Hearing none, we, uh, do have an executive session on the agenda, and so I do need a motion to enter into executive session to discuss pending litigation. I have a motion, if I can, any questions or comments? I need a, uh, I hope I'm getting unanimous with this. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, we're gonna enter into executive session. If you would like to leave, you may. Uh, we will come back and discuss what we discussed in executive session.
To reconvene the regular city council meeting from executive session. All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed?
No.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are now reconvening the regular city council meeting.
There's the attorney, but he's not in here yet.
Who's who?
Hey! Y'all are waiting on a don. We have now reconvened the regular city council meeting. City Attorney, would you like to make any comment about what we discussed in executive session?
The executive session was to discuss the litigation between the Abigael Police Department and the city of Abigael. We met with a lawyer from Baton Rouge and we've made some decisions on how to proceed. We'll need some information to be gathered before we make a formal or ask the council for a formal motion to proceed. So we're gonna work on getting that information for y'all and then once we have that, bring it back to the council. That's for some direction on where to go.
Okay, meeting adjourned.